We'll go on without you, I guess. All right, well, that's good to hear. Please do.
I feel like I'm underneath a Christmas tree right now and all the presents are open.
A little warmer over here, too. I got the heater going.
I don't have an extra one.
I'll call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting for December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Please rise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. Please restate it. Roll call, please.
Council member Mark Joseph.
I'm here.
Council member David Oro.
Here.
Council member Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abudamos.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you all. Moving on now to report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council convened an open session at four P M. After ascertaining there were no comments on the matter, agendized for closed session, you adjourned to closed session. You concluded the closed session at six fifteen. There will be a written report upon return from closed session under the provisions of Government Code, Section fifty-four, nine fifty-seven, point one B. That would conclude the report. Unless there are questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on. We have a, I understand Chief Greenberg has an introduction to do this evening. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the community, city staff. It's my pleasure to, I'm very excited to announce that our new lieutenant at A C P D will be starting January ninth, twenty twenty-three. And she, so this is Lieutenant Nicole Dudley. And she's not a stranger to A C P D. She's been working down here in various roles. And I'll let her introduce herself and tell a little about herself.
Well, good evening. Welcome. Good to be working with you in a new capacity.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to come back to American Canyon as lieutenant. I'm excited about that. The city is growing a lot, a lot of change in building. And I'm looking forward to coming back and working with the men and women here. It's a great department, a little bit about by myself. I've been with the county just shy of twenty-five years. Started in ninety-eight. I've worked investigations, patrol. Currently, I oversee the courts, the bailiffs, transportation, and our civil coroner bureau. Other than that, I'm a little bit, not a big talker, but I'm looking forward to be here and working with you all and appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good to have you with us. Moving on to our agenda for this evening, public comments, anything item not on the agenda? Anybody from the public wishing to address the council, any item not on the agenda? Anybody in the queue online?
Yes. We have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening.
Merry Christmas, everybody. And enjoy your Christmas break.
Could you, a little closer to the mic or a little more volume, please?
Okay, let me turn it up. Can I hear me?
That's better. Thank you.
My question is, I know I, I know we're just gonna wait till December thirteenth to see, their way we can put new sidewalk in there at Dumont, West Karen, Dumont. We need sidewalk above my house. Thank you.
Hold the curtain, yes. Well, thank you for that. Any other speaker?
Yes. Yvonne Beginski. Go ahead, Yvonne.
I just unmuted myself. Good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. I'm here today to talk a little bit of the developments that you are all looking at for the grasslands and the hills of American Canyon. I want you to know that as the buildings go up and after they scrape off the land and covered it with cement, there's something more that they do. They actually surround the buildings with twenty or thirty bait station traps because they need to kill the moles, the voles, the ground squirrels, and the other rodents that might interfere with operations. Last year, the Napa County Agricultural Commissioner responded to my complaint about the high number of bait stations in an area of winery warehouses, office buildings, et cetera. They didn't believe me when I told them there were hundreds of them and they were everywhere. When they went out and investigated, they found four hundred and ten bait stations in a three hundred acre parameter, twenty-six different pesticide companies. Wow, they were shocked. Many of them were shocked because this was a wildlife area and it was adjoining a creek. Some of the buildings had a bait station every ten feet. Imagine how many they were killing. Imagine really is all we have because a rodent does not enter a bait station and die. It eats the bait and then it takes three to four days to die out in the field. And somewhere out in that field, it's gonna be grabbed by a hawk or a fox or a coyote. You see, when you all approve those developments, what you don't know is that it doesn't only kill the wildlife when they do the buildings. They kill the snakes and the rabbits and the burrowing rodents. But afterwards, they surround those buildings with the bait stations and the killing continues until everything is gone. When the food supply has been annihilated, the other animals leave. But down here in South County, they no longer have any place to go. They can't keep going south to Vallejo. When you've all zoned all this land industrial development, you didn't develop a habitat conservation plan. And there has been a substantial decline of wildlife. I know because I'm out there walking the land every day. Even with the defeat of Measure J, and most of you sitting here did support that measure, there is still a lot of development on the books in American Canyon, more warehouses, trucks, and office buildings. The loss of habitat will be devastating, not just to the animals, but to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then we'll close public comment on items not on the agenda. Moving forward in our agenda, we have the agenda changes. If there are no agenda changes, I'll accept the motion for the consent calendar. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
What are we motioning? I'm sorry.
Accepting.
Oh, thank you. I thought we were still on agenda changes. Okay, that was quick. Okay, I'm sorry. So motion Oro and second, Washington. Council member Joseph.
Yes.
Council member Oro.
Yes.
Council member Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudamos.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Move forward in our agenda, public hearing, item six, one oh six Wilson Way. Special assessment lien continued from December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is a continued matter from two prior council hearings. It concerns authority under the city code and state law to impose remediation costs on one oh six Wilson Way. Notice has again been given several times to Mr. Schmidt about the matter. And as of the ti, as of right now and as of the time I did the staff report, there's no indication that he's retained counsel. I, I like to continue to give deference to the property owner in that effort. But I, I think that that deference has been given through the two extensions. The discretion still lies with the council. But if you wish to proceed, the staff report's clear. It sets forth how the costs were computed. They're stated correctly and the resolution in the amount of slightly over a one hundred and eighty-one thousand. That would be the conclusion of the staff presentation, unless there are questions. It is a continued public hearing.
Any questions from us, council at this time? That being said, we'll open the continued public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none. Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
So, I'll close.
Is a point of clarification. So the property owner isn't here tonight?
Correct.
It appears. Any knew about it and all that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Return to council for further discussion, desired action.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, next in order, a resolution in the city council of the city of American Canyon confirming the report of proceedings and accounting for the costs incurred in abating the public nuisance located at one oh six Wilson Way and notice of ordering the imposition of special assessment lien.
Second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Council member Joseph.
Yes.
Council member Oro.
Yes.
Council member Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudamos.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. With that, we'll move on to business items. Item number seven, new open space active transportation and sustainability commission.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item tonight represents the conclusion, really, of a process that we embarked upon starting last March and is going to, if approved, result in the reconstituting of what would be the former Open Space Advisory Committee into a new commission. The commission would be known as the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission. And it would be, through some subsequent actions, be of equal status and so forth as the Parks and Community Services Commission and the, and the Planning Commission. The staff report outlines the history of the Open Space Advisory Committee and originally formed in two thousand and five and then through iterations thereafter. Really, in two thousand and ten, also becoming the city's bicycle advisory committee and really spearheaded a lot of efforts related to open space, particularly the new open space and the wetlands. And the successes of the, the group, along with state and local and federal partners and private partnerships, have resulted in the trail system that's out there. We've met a number of times since last spring and the council has met twice with the Open Space Advisory Committee and really provided the direction on where this new body should go. On November second, myself and Park and Recreation Director Akita and Public Works Director Smithies met with the, the O S A C to develop a revised resolution that really describes their purpose and purview and to develop a revised work plan for the rest of this fiscal year. On December seventh, we brought those, those working drafts in a, in a final version to that body and with a couple of edits from that meeting, are bringing forward to you those items that are in the staff report, attachments one and exhibit A. Attachment one is that what we're terming as a reauthorization resolution or a reconstitution resolution, really turning the Open Space Advisory Committee into this new Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission with that, that broader purview and, and equal status to those other bodies. The resolution goes through and kind of explains the roles and responsibilities of, of the new commission and kind of outlines the process with how staff can utilize this new commission and how the council will, will utilize it. In general, the commission provides that kind of review and comment, kind of that consultancy as we are kind of terming it to staff. So we would bring various items to, to this commission. On the way going to city council, we'd bring it to them first, receive their comments in that kind of consultancy manner. In many instances, we'll take those comments and revise the documents. There may be other times where we don't incorporate all of their comments. But regardless, there was, those comments are memorialized in the meeting minutes and in, and in the record. And so then, as we then bring those particular items to city council for approval, part of that process is to explain to the, to the public and to the council that we went to this new commission. They provided comments. We incorporated some or all and then explained if we didn't incorporate them, some of those reasons why. And we bring that to the council for the council's ultimate final determination, or if the council wants changes, of course, we would implement those. So the resolution kind of talks about that process and then the staff report talks about it as well. The work plan itself is attachment, sorry, exhibit A to attachment one and really kind of outlines some of the topics that the, this new commission, the O S A C's commission would, would look at through the balance of, of June of next year. The intent with this, as well as the other commissions, is to create a regular cadence of review and, and input from the council as to the work plans of these bodies. And so we could expect in the April and May timeframes that the council would, would sit jointly with the O S A C's and also sit separately but jointly with the P C S and talk about their work plans for those subsequent years. So these eight items, some, you know, might be completed by the end of the fiscal year. Others would continue on, you know, the multi-year sort of activities. But wanted to identify at least some of those topics that will be touched upon, you know, before the end of June. One area, I'll call it of either uncertainty or ambiguity that's still out there and I don't believe needs to be resolved tonight, but wanted to surface it, is the notion around sustainability and particularly what the council's intention is around the purview of sustainability as it relates to this new commission. And so don't need to solve it tonight, but even in meeting with the, the former O S A C group, there was, you know, some open-endedness to what was really meant by the, by the council in particular because of the interplay. There is both a, a countywide climate action committee, of which the council has two, of council appointees to. There is an ad hoc local group here that the council has been involved with and has created an interim plan. And so, you know, there are a lot of questions about how this new commission interplays with those other two bodies. And I'll, I'll note in talking with council ahead of time, item number five in this work plan could probably be amended to include not just the, the greenhouse gas inventory, which the C A C did. And we actually received a presentation at the last meeting. But could also be amended to add the interim climate action report that the ad hoc committee prepared. And so that would be staff's recommendation is to, to modify item number five to add essentially another report, another presentation to this body. And I think that will, that presentation should probably happen first and go a long ways to sort of sorting out really the, the relationships between the ad hoc committee and this new commission and its then relationship to the Climate Action Committee. Some of the, some of the next steps as it relates to this commission were staff's looking at a new ordinance that would memorialize this commission into the municipal code. This is the same for P C S and the Planning Commission. And so staff anticipates bringing a new ordinance in January with the second reading in February that, you know, further establishes this commission as part of the municipal code, really on equal footing with those, with those other bodies. Not much really to those ordinance, it's just creating the commission and kind of memorializing that. So that's some of the next steps. There is also a couple of vacancies. Two of the current O S A C commissioners' terms expire at the end of December and we're actively recruiting for two vacancies on the O S A C's commission with the presumption that the council wants to proceed tonight. We've opened that recruitment. One of the things that staff had kind of assumed, although was unsaid by the council, was the three remaining O S A C members, staff was presuming that those terms would be extended, incorporated into a reoccurring O S A C's commission. So as opposed to recruiting, as opposed to getting rid of all five and having five brand new, five brand new people on the O S A C's, or at least five new recruitments. Staff went with the assumption that the council would just want to recruit for the vacancies, really turning this one body kind of reconstituting itself to another rather than a hard stop and a brand new five. So we, certainly within the council's purview to do that other idea, but staff sort of assumed the council would want the others to, to remain. So that's how we, we operated and that's why we're only recruiting for two and not, not five.
Could you please restate the point you raised on the two vacancies? Are we actively recruiting?
Yes.
And when, when will the recruitment process end?
The, the recruitments currently list December thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, sorry. Thirty-first is a holiday. December thirtieth, a week from Friday, as that last day that someone could apply for those two vacancies.
For that matter, will it be taken up in the new year?
Correct. And then in January, the council would go through an interview process for those two vacancies.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. The only other items I would note from the staff report, we, we did some rough estimates about the cost of, of the commission, you know, roughly related to the, the meetings and staffing the meetings, et cetera. The, the staff themselves are already budgeted, so it doesn't really represent a new cost. Those are existing staff. We're not proposing new staff as a, as a, you know, related to this action. There would be compensation, a stipend, like those other commissioners are paid, and so that, that wasn't budgeted. Assuming the council is interested in, in moving forward tonight, when we bring back that ordinance in January, we'd actually tack on a budget action to, to officially amend the budget to provide for that.
What do we anticipate that budget to be?
About six thousand dollars, Mayor, to cover the stipends through the end of the fiscal year, as well as name tags and things like that.
All right. Right. Thank you.
Other than that, you know, I know there are members of the public who probably want to, probably want to comment tonight and would be happy to, to hear from them and certainly answer any other questions that the council may have.
Any questions at this point from council? Okay. Public comment on this matter is open. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you very much. As you know, this has been a process the last six, eight months. And as Chair of O S A C and possibly a new member of O S A C's, we're really, I'm really happy with what we've put together, what the staff has put together. I think we have some areas that we can expand into that we, as, you know, commission and council will need to kind of work out. But I'm excited about the rest of the fiscal year and I hope you approve this. Thank you. Oh, and I'm Nancy Mattson, citizen.
Okay. Is there another speaker?
Thank you, Barry Christian, American Canyon. I, I believe in participatory government. I think it's important on a lot of levels to have people involved with their government in, in a lot of different ways. I think it makes the community stronger and, and it just, I could go on and on about it. But I'm, I'm grateful that it looks like you might keep the O S A C committee going on in, in this manner, although with new responsibilities. I want to, it needed to go on in some manner, whether it was Planning Commissioner or a new commissioner or something. So I'm glad there'll still be, you know, citizens working with you. We've had some great people on the committee that we had. Robin Myers had a PhD in geography and had been a park ranger. Michael Stanfield, PhD in Latin American history. Todd Novak, engineer. Nancy Mattson, engineer. And then, of course, David Oro and Pierre Washington, both. So I've had the privilege of working with some great people and I, I think we can do some good things and I hope we make you proud. I, I want to say that no matter how talented or good the people are, people need good information in order to make good decisions. So I think the city council needs good information. But then also, this commission needs good information in order to make good decisions on how to advise you. And I think that I've, the regulations are all written out and they may be open for interpretation or not, but I think they're pretty good. But I think the important point is that everybody's working together, that staff and the commission are coordinating, meeting with you, getting out to the public, getting public input, so that everybody's kind of on the same page moving forward on. And I think that'll well-serve the city if we can, we can do that. And, and like I said, I hope we make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the, next speaker, please?
Yes, Beth Marcus. I'm not quite sure what these guys do, but I know they do a lot of work and they've done it for a long time. And I'm just here to say that I hope that you support them and thank you for all that you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience wishing to comment or speak on this matter? Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay. That being said, I will close public comment. Move on to council discussion, further, and desired action. Okay, council member Oro.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this whole thing, actually, and I'm glad, pretty glad of the work that you guys have done. And also, want to thank the longtime committee members for sticking with it and going through this process, this, this hard change. But I think it's going to be for the better. One question towards the city manager. When we were putting this together, the Napa Bike, Napa County Bike Coalition came in and mentioned the importance for active transportation to be part of public works. How do you foresee that working together and being integral to actually, if we're going to have an active transportation program, public works is a big part of engineering the changes that we need to make? Can you speak to that a little bit and how you see this group working and interacting with them?
Yes, councilor, we're happy to address that. So for, for the balance of this fiscal year, I envision myself continuing to, to be the point person for this commission as we kind of get things on a firm footing, kind of get that cadence of, of annual activities. Prospectively, in the, in the next fiscal year, we actually envision this playing out where there's not necessarily a singular department head who's a quote, "point person." There, the, the breadth of topics that this, this group is going to have purview over is multi, multiple departments. And so, and in fact, at the February first meeting, we envisioned our maintenance utilities director, Felix Hernandez, coming giving a presentation on water conservation and its sustainability elements. So really, three different department heads, we're going to have a role. Public Works Director Erica Smithies will definitely have a role, particularly on the active transportation, but also as an open space and trails expert in her own right, will have quite a bit of information to share there, too. And on sustainability, you know, really all three areas, but in particular Felix's group and the sustainability efforts that they're making. So we envision kind of structuring this up on a rotational basis where beginning of the meetings, sort of technical presentations of a variety of topics and then one or two kind of business items. And it will either be one of the multiple department heads and/or their staff presenting those particular topics. So it's not going to, to fall to any one particular person. It is going to vary. But on the active transportation in particular, yes, Director Smithies will have a heavy hand, as will even Community Development Director Brent Cooper, because part of our conversation and was even acknowledged by the, by the, by the O S A C as we were talking to them. Sometimes it's design documents as it relates to active transportation and sometimes it's development standards and development review. And so the interplay of a particular development project and some of their active transportation features could come into play and/or the development standards more broadly. So we're going to have to ferret that out a little bit, but you can really see this touching really all four of our outward-facing departments and, and, you know, so we're gonna, we're gonna kind of rotate that around.
Thank you. And that makes sense to me. And then a follow-up question. And then a follow-up question to that is, what policies does the council need to put in place to help guide some of the things that they need to do? I'll give you the bike plan and, you know, if we, we sounded like we had a lot of support for a bike-first city or more bike-friendly city. Obviously, policies need to be put into place that probably guides them and the planning commission towards those things. Are there, can you, if you don't have the answer now, can we find steps to take in the near future to where we set policies in place to give the commissions better guardrails, I guess, or guidelines, or a vision to what we want to achieve? I'm not sure we're there yet. I feel like there's possibility of, you know, hey, these are the things that they're going to do, but then policies aren't in place to necessar, necessarily force that function, if you will, and that's what I want to see happen with the help of the commission.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. I'll start by just saying it's going to be incremental, and where you're first going to see that may not be in the policymaking realm, but in the actual, the project realm itself. So we envision this body seeing the draft CIP, the Draft Capital Improvement Program, before it comes to council. So for fiscal '23, '24, as part of the June budget adoption includes a CIP. This body will be seeing some of those elements in the CIP in April and May. And so you're going to start to see that in project form first in that review process. Getting to the place of identifying policies, right, and either changes to policies would be a second step. We're going to kind of have to go through some iterations first to figure out where some of those policies may be lacking. And, you know, there's, you know, we're considering even a joint meeting between the planning commission and the OSATs, in part because of really active transportation and the collision of active transportation standards and new development and seeing how, you know, this body won't be reviewing and approving development projects, right? It's not going to be, you know, it's not one of the steps, that's what the planning commission does and then the council if the council approvals needed. But the interplay between those active transportation standards and making sure that they're, that the planning commission is comfortable with what they are and they're, you know, there's reciprocity there. So we're envisioning kind of a joint session with those, with that group, and we'll see what comes out of that as well. We know the planning commission has raised at times questions about, do we have adequate policies for new development and active transportation? And so, which is in itself is a very big topic.
Yeah, I think that's a force for good if you combine those, because those are the things that can actually come together. So if you have a new development, you know, okay, active transportation, put in bike racks. Oh, sustainability, put in charging stations for those things. And I would make sure that those, those two groups are at least talking to each other, if not very much married, to the vision that we have for this. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, given that this is a new, then it's a process for evolving through it, certainly we're aware that the commission serves at the discretion of the council. We appoint the membership for it, so there has to be that discussion between the two bodies. And I think this will evolve in the right direction. I see it as a way of enhancing activities that we're all interested in all levels at the city, both park and rec and park community services and planning commission. But this is another group they can look at, take the time to examine outside the purview of those two to come back with a plan for this further discussion, which ultimately the city council bears responsibility for approving. With that, council member Washington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm basically glad to hear that the current OSAT-
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead. I pushed the wrong button, go ahead.
Okay, the current OSAT folks are here tonight and support, and I'm also in support of the new OSAT commission. Being part of OSAT, prior to becoming a city council, I benefited in so many, so many ways, and I learnt so much from the two of you sitting here today. So I thank you for your advocacy throughout the last eight months pushing forward for it. So with that said, I just wanted to mention that I'm in total support of the commission.
My apologies, I hit the wrong button.
That's okay. I'll always get a chance to talk. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody in this process. It certainly was a long ordeal. I agree with some of the comments that have been made that it turned out okay, so that's the whole point when you think about it. And I certainly appreciate adding the, a presentation on the interim climate action plan as part of their, their current year work plan, because I do think the ad hoc committee role, when it was created, the role of OSAT obviously didn't include sustainability. The countywide climate action committee wasn't talking about regional climate action plans. So the role of the ad hoc committee didn't change, but everything around it did. So I, for one, would say that our, the interim, the ad hoc committee, its role is to slowly fade, fade away frankly, and defer to the new OSATs as well as the countywide climate action plan. But it's, some of its members may morph into a community organization that will be advocates for climate action here in American Canyon. Now, having said that, I also appreciate the idea, as the city manager pointed out, where OSATs and the planning commission may partner up and talk about, you know, philosophies and concepts, because I think that's all part of that informal working relationship where everybody gets together and conveys the concerns, because, you know, the planning commission is the one that can impose those conditions, but they need to know how important it is, and that's where OSAT comes in. So with that in mind, the only other thing I wanted to say is the same thing I mentioned when OSAT, when I was at the OSAT meeting a couple of months ago. And to council member Oro's concerns about policy, to me, it all comes down to the work plan, that ultimately, the work plan is a combination of all the things you want to do. It's kind of like the economic concept of supply and demand. We want to do a million things, but there's only enough staff to do a much smaller number. And so to me, the real role of the work plan is to kind of, you know, negotiate, you know, how many things you want to do with how much staff you've got. And so you come up with something that is ambitious but doable, and so when the council adopts that work plan, it really reflects that understanding that there's enough capacity to accomplish these things. If something changes, if the commission says, I want to take on, you know, five new things, they're going to have to figure out what they got to give up to do that. Likewise, if staff suddenly has something, they've got to come back to the council to say, okay, I thought we had the staff to do this, now we don't. You know, basically, council, we've got to figure out where to go from there. So that's, that's how I see the work plan as being so essential to the success of all of this, and that's why it's really important. And then obviously, that work plan will evolve over time. So for the next six months, you know, probably figuring out what the new role of the commission is, getting some presentations, getting up to speed on some of these newer areas is about all you can expect. But going forward, we should begin to see a work plan that envisions, you know, a bike-friendly grant or a bike-friendly community, or rethinking the bike plan, or at least, you know, insisting that we start getting some of those trails built out and so on. So I, like I said, the work plan is really the nuts and bolts of all of this, and it's so essential. And I think for me, that's what I'm looking forward to is, is having that annual joint session where we go over the work plan and get a sense of what's, what we can look forward to. So obviously, I support all of this, having been a big champion a few months ago, but I just wanted to talk about the work plan and how essential it is in making everything come together. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the comment from council this time? All of the public comment on this matter? Anybody from the public? Who have taken that?
We've done that.
No? Any further thoughts? Okay, we will now move forward as to our motion then to accept the resolution.
If I may, if there's no other comments, I-
Councilmember Joseph, I just want to make sure, you said there was some revisions in here that we would make? Do we need to call those out?
Yes, staff, staff would recommend on the work plan on number five that we add, we revise it to say presentation on Napa County Greenest gas inventory and presentation and interim report from the Sustainability Ad Hoc Committee.
So we're adding notes?
Presentations instead of one.
Does that have to be part of the resolution?
I prefer it to be that way.
We could say work plan as amended.
Yeah, work plan as amended to include the interim report from Sustainability Ad Hoc Committee.
And I will endeavor to incorporate that in the motion I'm about to make. I will make a motion, if there's no other comments, to adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon reconstituting the Open Space Advisory Committee as the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission, and approving the commission's fiscal year 2022, '23 work plan as amended.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call, please. Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Move on now to business item number eight, Human Resources Annual Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager Maria Ojeda will handle, handle the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Maria Ojeda, Assistant City Manager. I also have helping with this presentation Scott Corey, our HR officer. We've got a brief presentation for you this evening. It's, it's nice to be able to come to you at least once a year and let you know what we're doing internally to the organization in HR. We have two full-time employees, get a lot of help from other staff too. We're all a big team here. And they, they do a lot of things for the organization, mostly internally. What you see mostly externally is on our website, related mostly to job postings and things of that nature, but we wanted to provide you a little bit of an update on what we've done in the past year, some changes we've seen, and then I'll let you know what we plan on working on in the future. This is a brief presentation. You've received a staff report with some graphics and things like that. We are able to go into detail on those if you would so desire, so, which are going to see. On these slides isn't necessarily everything that you've seen in the report, but we're happy to dive into it if you'd like. So tonight, we're going to briefly talk with you about our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, the labor market and what we're experiencing, talk to you about our workforce demographics, employee development and succession planning, and also some of our new measures for human resources. So DEI initiatives, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So in this past year, we've instituted blind applications to reduce bias in hiring processes. What is, what is blind applications? Basically, when we receive applications in HR, HR is the only department that can see all of the information from the applicant. So the minute we screen them for their knowledge, skills, and abilities based upon the recruitment that we're hiring for, we actually redact anything that's personal related to the applicant, their name, email address, address, things of that nature, and that can reduce hiring biases. We also, you know, in our workforce, our workforce is changing and growing, and we've got some growing families among our employees, and so we worked hard this past year and found a nice space in City Hall to support the, what the law requires us to do, but also to support our growing families, and we found, we developed a lactation space and room for them. We're also, in our application processes, we're focusing on knowledge, skills, and abilities, and the second, the fourth bullet, acknowledge non-traditional paths to employment. We're also doing that in our applications. Currently, we use CalOps. I'll talk a little bit about that later and how we're transitioning away from that. But we provide a way for employees to not only submit an application and a resume and job history, those are the standard things, but we're also asking prospective employees to tell us what other ways have led them to qualify for the job that they're applying for. There's multiple ways to arrive at this through volunteer or other, you know, self-employment, privately-owned businesses, things of that nature. So we're trying to find different ways to give applicants the opportunity to be, to showcase their knowledge, skills, and abilities and why they're qualified, other ways of qualifying. And to augment that even more, particularly in the trades positions that are, you know, manual, we actually have developed more onsite skills-based testing, and so that allows employees who may not necessarily interview nearly as well, because they're, most of their work is manual work, to actually test through a skills test here onsite at City Hall or at some of our yards offsite, not specifically here at City Hall. So we're doing that as well, and we're involving the employees in that practice and process as well. And then we're diversifying our oral board participants, and we try to do that by starting early. It's really difficult sometimes to get participants outside the area to participate, because everyone's recruiting right now. It's, everyone's busy with recruitment, so we try to start early, but we also try to make sure that there's diversity in our oral boards and a wide representation as best we can. And we're also, we've also standardized our employee onboarding. And so there's a lot of technology here that we have available at City Hall, and one of the main sources is our website. So we have information for our current employees online on our website that's, that almost has made a lot of our processes for current employees paperless, and it all routes itself to HR privately and securely, which is great, particularly for employees who are not here at City Hall. But also, our onboarding process used to be a really big, big binder, probably this big. And so it's much smaller now, but we actually have presentations that we provide the employees, and we've made a standardized checklist of all the different things we want them to know when they become members of the American Canyon workforce. And so we've worked very hard to do that in the past year and refine that, and it's always a work in progress. And so I'm going to transition the presentation over to Scott Corey, who's going to talk with you more about some of the other sections I mentioned, and then I'll come back to close. If at any time you have questions about some of the data that you had on the staff report, please let us know.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit now about the labor market and what we're seeing as far as what we're experiencing in our recruitments. It's a pretty good time to start a new job if you're highly qualified. A lot of employers are looking for highly qualified folks, and it's an opportunity for new employees to ask for things and to really push employers a little bit on what they can get when they are hired. So we're seeing more recruitments. We're also seeing a decrease in highly qualified applicants. So we're seeing this combination where we're seeing lots and lots of applicants, but fewer of them are highly qualified. An example of that, a recent recruitment we did for plant operator 123. We were looking for an experienced plant operator. Plant operator one needs to have a T1 certificate and one year of experience, actual hands-on in a water plant. We had 51 applicants who applied for that. Six of them made it to an interview. None of them had a complete one-year of identifiable water plant experience. They had other combinations of things that we thought, well, maybe. They'd worked in refinery plants, they'd worked in other situations, so perhaps. Turned out that, that recruitment, we didn't make any job offers from that recruitment. And because what we ended up with, what we identified was, a lot of people got T1, T2 certificates, which is great, but they had no experience. We had a whole bunch of people who were perfectly qualified plant operator apprentices. We were looking for a qualified, experienced operator. So in that case, what we chose to do, rather than go with someone who was an outside person as an apprentice, we shut down that recruitment, we closed that up without a hire, turned that around to an internal recruitment, and got two maintenance workers who wished to be considered as plant operator apprentices, and one of them was promoted to being a water plant operator apprentice. So as an example of how we're seeing these big numbers, you think you have, I was pretty excited, you got 51 applicants going, woo, that's looking pretty good. We start really looking at the details, it gets, it's the highly qualified part that's falling off. We're also experiencing an increased, what I call applicant selectivity. They are being more selective. We are seeing more people declining our offer letters, saying, no, thank you, I don't want to take that offer, and they have, you know, they're having other job opportunities that are coming in, or they're just saying no with no real great reason. We're experiencing that in our environmental specialist recruitment, which has been ongoing. With this budget year, we've authorized three new position, three positions for environmental specialists to build up that department. We had 20 applicants. We brought 10 of them to an oral board, highly qualified folks. The oral board sent seven of them through to the departmental interview, and their advice was, you really can't miss with any of these, they're all highly qualified, great folks. We hired two, three others declined our offers, and we have a fourth one that's out there that may be in the process of declining as well. So- So one of the people had family issues we couldn't quite wrap our hands around and help them with, so, but they were asking for a lot of accommodation and things we just couldn't quite do right off the start. So those are just examples of a couple of recruitments that are showing these particular trends in our labor market. Want to talk a little bit now about our workforce demographics, some highlights from those demographics. One of the pieces of study that we did this year was looking at how much time is actually worked from the budgeted positions that have been, that have been approved by the council. So in 2022, fiscal year 22, the council budgeted 79 full-time budgeted positions across the workforce. When you deduct out of that, the vacancies and all the various of crude leaves that the employees took, 67.5% of that budgeted, of the budgeted staff hours were actually worked by full-time employees. The rest of it was taken up predominantly in various types of leaves. As the state continues to pass measures, increasing the amount, the ability of employees to take leaves, that's sort of exacerbating that experience as far as actually having work hours available to work. Some key characteristics of our workforce, we are comprised of predominantly mid-career employees, 50%, however, 50% of our employees have been here for five years or less. So as we're going out and doing recruitments, particularly in technical and professional areas, we're recruiting people that come in with mid-career experience, they're coming in in their, particularly in their 40s, and they're coming in with quite a bit of experience, they just haven't been here that long, given that 50% of our employees have been here less than five years. Compared to last year, we've seen a 5% increase in the number of women in our workforce. We've also seen an increase in the Black and Hispanic members of our workforce, a 5% increase for our Black employees, and a 3% increase for our Hispanic workforce. When we look at where our employees are coming from, where they live, 59% of them live in Napa County, the highest percentage of any one city is 44%, and that's from the City of American Canyon. When you look at all the ethnic identities of our employees, the only community that hits every single one of the ethnic groups is the City of American Canyon, as far as where our employees live. Another 29% of our employees live in Solano County. So if you take Napa and Solano Counties together as a locality, that is huge majority of rural employees live, they're very local. And that is increasing. One of the things we see when people are coming and applying here is they want to cut their commutes, they don't want to keep driving to San Francisco, to East Bay, these areas, they want to bring, be closer to home. So we're definitely seeing that even in our recruitments. I'm going to speak now a little bit about our employee development and our future succession planning. One of the things we pride ourselves on is developing career ladders and helping employees go up those ladders. Talked to you a little bit earlier about the maintenance workers moving into the plant operator apprentice. Being a plant operator is a tangential and different career ladder from being a maintenance worker. So that's an opportunity that we have where people can move from particularly maintenance worker 1, early career 2, over into plant operations. Some of the things we're doing to support that are some rotations and work assignments. We did that during the past couple of years, particularly in finance in the city clerk's office, and allowed employees to move and try some different things for short periods of time and try some new work experiences. We've also added the apprentice opportunities. Of our four current plant operators, three of them came up as plant operator apprentices. Two of them have just become plant operator 1s, and we have a brand-new apprentices come in. So as we're having a hard time recruiting experienced plant operators, we're sort of growing our own folks. We're encouraging them to develop up, and these are people we know. One of the things that our Maintenance Utilities Department is doing with our maintenance workers is encouraging them to cross-train with their certifications, so they can pick up some, work on some of those certifications while they're still maintenance workers, which helps them become really qualified plant operators. This is also seen in the number of internal recruitments we've been doing. We had six last year and five this current year. Whenever we do a promotion, it's always competitive, and we typically have more than one applicant amongst our employees for these positions. Looking to the future, and our retirements, and then our need to really focus on succession planning moving forward. Currently, we have 10 employees who are age-eligible to retire, age-eligible. In CalPERS, for classic members, that means they're at least 55 years old, for Peppera members, they're at least 62 years old. 10 people are in that position right now. That's about 15% of your full-time workforce. By 2027, if nobody retires before then, we'll have 18, which is about 20, almost a quarter of your, of your full-time workforce by 2027, will be eligible to retire, from an age perspective. Okay. Okay. Well, I'll talk now a little bit about some of the new things we're doing in human resources and some of the things coming up in the future. We already mentioned that we are doing a lot of things online and doing more online employee services. We're trying, every time we have a piece of paper, we're saying, can this be a Laserfish form? Can this be some other form that's submitted electronically to help us improve that process and make it more appealing to our employees? One of the reasons we're looking at some of our forms in Laserfish is because Laserfish is adaptable to mobile devices, which is really helpful for our field employees who don't always have access to, regular access to computers and things like that. You give them something on their phone, they pop it open, and they get it back to you pretty quickly. So we're trying to be aware that not everyone sits at a desk and works behind a laptop or a desktop. We're launching an employee book club to help employees get together and talk about work-related books and topics, to share that information with each other. We're just starting that, actually something that Jen Kanzenback is heading up, and we're starting our first session in next month. We recently, with the help of our communications team, produced a recruitment video that was designed to help us outreach to primarily finance director candidates. We're having some trouble recruiting a finance director, but it's also added, it's also being attached to all of our recruitments. It's an, it's a video where employees talking about what a great place it is to work here in American Canyon, and particularly our diversity of our staff in our community. As we look toward what's coming in, particularly in 2023, we wish to initiate LinkedIn Learning as a platform to help support our, some of our management and supervisory training. We've done, we do quite a few internal promotions and moving people up through their careers, we recognize we also need to support them with some additional supervisory and management training and give them those tools. We mentioned earlier about CalOps being our recruitment platform. CalOps was great, it has done a lot of good things for us. It has not really evolved to the level we would like it to continue to evolve and expectations for what our candidate, our applicants are looking for. So we are moving to neogov.com as a platform. Many local governments around here utilize this platform, and we think it'll be a better, give us a lot better tools and options in communicating and keeping involved with our We're also going to be updating many of our policies and training on new state laws that are coming down the, down the line. We have some issues around some drug testing issues, as well as new leave uses, particularly sick leave and the California Family Rights Act leaves, so those policy changes will be coming as well. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, and.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Looks very creative, thank you. Certainly is a challenging time trying to find staff. I was interested in your apprenticeship. I attended the graduation at Napa Valley College for the TIPS program, it's the trade introduction program, gets people ready for apprenticeships. I was just wondering if you've been able to access any of that. It's very entry-level type of thing for, because some are moving on into electrician field, some are going into carpentry, but it's, excuse me, I've had as many as 20 applicants in the program before, it's a smaller graduation this time around.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, growing your own is probably the best approach you can get. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Have you been able to utilize anything from Napa Valley College?
We're definitely in communication with them, and they help us with our recruitments, and accessing their student base is definitely an area we're focused on, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Oro.
Thank you. Listen, I really have no comments, but the one comment I wanted to make was the staff report was very well-written, and if I had to give an award for the best staff report of the year, I would give it to this one. I just felt like when I was done reading it, I was like, I know everything, and it's just perfectly, it was well, it was clearly written, it was well-written, and very insightful, and thank you for the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
I probably want to say the same thing. I enjoyed the report, I'm glad that we started this last year, I love the fact that you're doing it annually, it's really good information. And I'm, just as I was pleased last year that we have such a high percentage that are locals, because I do think there's some merit to not just internal recruitment, but in, you know, but recruitment, community recruitment that is then internal. About the only thing, and I asked the city manager, and I'll just throw it out to see if there's any creative way, is to try to figure out the demographics of the segment that have been here five years or less versus everybody else, just to be able to see if we're getting better over time or not. So I realize, you know, that may be a difficult challenge, but you've done such a great job elsewhere, so maybe you can figure out a way for next year to kind of give us a snapshot of how that looks so that we can see that we're, where we're doing much better in the last couple of years versus the older employees who have been around longer. But like I said, I appreciate the report and the information, and some of the creative solutions that you're dealing with, given the fact that the labor market has really kind of changed, which is a good thing if you're a worker. All right, thank you.
So follow-up, I know the high schools and Napa Valley College currently, from time to time have like job fairs type of thing, so I'm assuming we're well-represented there.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we've, yes, attending job fairs is definitely a priority for us.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, hearing none. Public comment on the matter? Anybody? If not, I'll close public comment. Thank you for the presentation, it was very good, and thank you for the work you're doing.
Great job, thanks.
Okay, so it's an informational item, I'm moving on to Business Item Nine, matters related to selection of vice mayor and various city council committee appointments for 2023.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council, Theresa and I just rochambauded, and I lost, so I'll be presenting this, this last business item of the year, actually. Each year, the council goes through a process to select a vice mayor, and then it also goes through the process of appointing council members to serve on a variety of committees and commissions representing, representing the city. At your, at your place today is a reformatted version of the committee appointment list, and there are hard copies over there next to the agenda. I apologize, what was in the packet was, had a little bit of some formatting issues, but I guess before the council appoints these positions, some of these outside committees or agencies are very specific about who can represent the city. NVTA, for example, requires that one of the two appointments to NVTA be the mayor, and there are other bodies like that. So where those requirements are noted, those are identified on the list. But other than that, the council has discretion to appoint or otherwise allocate council members and alternates to these various bodies. There are a couple of these countywide bodies where it's actually a recommendation that the council makes, and sometimes the recommendation is to the city select committee, sometimes the recommendation is to the board of supervisors who then make the official appointment, so we tried to note that. In general, where a subcommittee of two council members is meeting, if it's what's known as an ad hoc committee, meaning that there's not a regular schedule that is, that is been approved, then those meetings are not actually subject to the Brown Act, there's an applicable exemption to that, and it's not agendized and can be a private meeting. In the event that it is a standing committee, for example, the finance committee is such a standing committee, then the Brown Act does apply, and those are agendized. And I mention that to say, and the staff report makes note of this, we are exiting a period where hybrid public meetings became the norm, not under our own volition, but in March of 2020, everyone suddenly figured out how to do hybrid meetings or started to, and we've been doing those really since March of 2020. The Brown Act, as written now, really doesn't provide for hybrid meetings, at least in the way that we've been doing them. And there's been some recent legislation that tries to kind of work through that, but the bottom line is both this council and many of these committees will at least have the board members themselves or council members in person. It still provides for remote public comment and participation, so that's still, we'll still be doing that, but individual council members and committee members, et cetera, are going to be expected to be in person really starting in March, and I mention that because that's going to be a little more challenging for some council members than others. You know, the primary responsibility of council members is to do the council duties, like tonight and meeting with constituents, really city council business. Many of these countywide and regional committees are, I'll call it ancillary, or of a lesser importance than the council duties. And so for council members who may be retired and may not have children in the home, are going to have less, less of those kinds of responsibilities to add on to their city council plate, but for council members who have children in the home and are working full-time, having a full plate of council meetings plus all these other more ancillary kinds of appointments, may be a real challenge. That was mitigated a little bit by being able to Zoom some meetings, but when Zoom is no longer an option, it's going to be a challenge for, for, you know, can be a challenge for council members who have these other responsibilities. So we noted that in the staff report, and the council is free to take this attachment and adopt it as-is, the council's free to suggest changes. It's possible not all of these changes even need to be approved tonight, if there are one or more that needs some further discussion, that's possible too. So it is really up to the council on how you all want to proceed, but we'd recommend at least first going with the vice mayor selection.
Yes, I thank you for that. I think we should take care of the matter, the item number one, implement an order, nominate and select vice mayor to serve for a one-year term, January to December 2023.
Well, considering the order of Abadamos, Joseph, then me, I think I would like to do it in order, and so I would like to nominate Councilmember Pierre Washington to be vice mayor in 2023.
I'd second that.
There's a motion in second. Any discussion needed?
I feel the love.
No, you're going to have all the headaches now of the new role of the vice mayor, so.
Any public comment?
We gave them new assignments for the vice mayor.
Any public comment on this matter?
Thank you, anybody online wanting to comment?
There, there are no hands online.
Very good, okay. There's a motion in a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, congratulations.
Well, it took you three years.
I know. Vice Mayor Abadamos, now Councilmember Abadamos, we thank you for your service.
This will involve a change to the seating arrangements, come January, it is protocol to have the vice mayor on the right-hand side of the mayor, so you'll notice some seating assignment changes come January.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll take up the second matter. Okay, now we'll take up the second matter of... What are the assignments?
Mr. Mayor, for my purposes, I'm happy with the assignments I have now. And one thing, I mentioned it to Vice Mayor Washington, that I had a chance to talk to representatives from the Napa County Resource Conservation District, and that sounds like an exciting outfit, and I would be happy to be an alternate to Vice Mayor Washington. In light of the, the manager's comments about some of us that have less family and employment responsibilities might be able to pick up the, the slack a little. So there.
Okay, and this is the Napa, under the multi-jurisdictional?
Uh, under, yes, or countywide board commissioning, yeah, Napa County Resource Conservation District.
Okay, yes, I've got it right here, the RCD.
Yeah, although meeting at eight AM is a whole different story.
[laughing]
I will regret this.
You know, I, I think there's several members of the public, before we start appointing ourselves, should we let them do that? Have a conversation about that or open it up to public comment?
I don't think that would be appropriate, I'm just trying to think the, it might be multiple comments with each appointment. Let's give it a try. Public comment on this, appointment for committees, commissions? Committee appointments, sorry, council committee appointments. Any comment? I don't see any. Anything online?
Nothing online.
Very great, we'll close that part. Okay, so, uh, we can take these in order, I think we've already started with Councilmember Joseph, if somebody else needs to jump in there. So you want to be, go for alternative, is that it, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, that way...
For the Napa County Resource Conservation District. All right, I'm going to put that in.
And if I, if I could mention real quick, they're, I'm trying to be sensitive to a lot of the commitments that we have for some of these committees, but with the, the new law, with us having to appear in person, I'm one of those people that during a day, I have a day job, sometimes in Vacaville, sometimes in South San Francisco, I'm really involved with the RCD, I'd like to remain with RCD, those, the days that I'll make an adjustment at my workspace to attend those, but I do have three other ones that would be very difficult for me to take that many days off to attend, and would hope that the council would be sensitive to my workday.
What would those three be, Councilmember?
The, the WIC, the CAC, the, that CAC being the Climate Action Committee, North Bay Water Reserve, and North Bay Watershed, including the distance involved with traveling for those, those areas.
Okay, let's take, look at those one at a time, Napa County Climate Action Committee. So, you're the second appointee, so we need a, okay.
So I certainly understand, but unfortunately I can't help since I'm, I'm the other side of that appointment.
Well, I would be interested in helping out with the Napa County Climate Action Committee, as second appointee. What was the other one?
The other one would be the Napa County Watershed WIC.
No.
What was it?
Is there, is there a third one? The third one, it's actually the, the third one would be the North Bay Water Reuse and the North Bay Watershed. One's in Santa Rosa, I believe, and the other, I believe is in Napa, no. Or Santa Rosa and...
North Bay Watershed Association, I serve as appointee for the Napa County Flood Control. So I'm all the way on that one. Anybody for WIC? For the water reuse or North Bay representing the city?
You know, you know what, I will, I'm looking at these schedules, is my working schedule as well? I'm not going to Nevada, I'm going to go to WIC, which I believe is in, in, on Third Street in Napa, right, at the county building?
It is, Second Street is on.
And that's late afternoon meetings?
Four PM, yes.
Right, and go straight into a bar and drink afterwards, right?
[laughing]
Sounds good to me.
There's a, there's a public meeting you're on record.
And your meeting starts at eight AM, I just don't have that kind of option there.
I don't want coffee.
Okay, so we're saying...
I'll, I'll, I'll take WIC for you, but that's all I can take.
Thank you.
Well, on North Bay Water Reuse Authority and North Bay Watershed Association, they sound similar, they have the same home address, does, can anyone explain which, what's...
Well, having served on the North Bay Watershed for several years, there has been an interest in some time for the two to merge together, but that hasn't been achieved.
Because I was thinking, you know, okay, the one that's in Nevada isn't so bad, well, well, let me see, does this mean they both meet at Nevada City Hall, or?
I think they do on different days.
Weren't they rotating?
Yeah, the, the North Bay Watershed has, the, the reason the address is the same is Sonoma County Water Agency ends up being the administrator for these entities, kind of like Napa County is for the Climate Action Committee, so that's, that's the billing address for the twos. The, the location of the meetings has rotated, Nevada City Hall is, seemed to be a, a pretty common one, Nevada Sanitation District is another. The North Bay Water Reuse Authority is a joint powers agency that the city is a party to, and we've done that ostensibly to try and become available for some, some funding with, I'll call it mixed results. North Bay Watershed Association is a completely nonprofit organization, and so it's, it's not, it's not, I mean, although they have been applying for grants and things, it's not a, it's not a government agency in that sense, it's just a collaboration of like-minded agencies, and particularly with North Bay Watershed, Mayor, if, if already in your role as flood district sort of appointee or, or, you know, representative there, I, I don't see any reason that you couldn't be wearing both hats there at North Bay Watershed?
Nor do I.
Yeah, so I, it's not an agency that makes any decisions to begin with, so really the conflict of interest, sort of standards or, or dueling offices wouldn't apply. So, it seems like having you as that representative and...
Well, that, that, that makes that an easy one.
Then, then I can do the North Bay Water Reuse Authority, since it's meeting in the same, it's a one quarterly meeting, so that's not too bad, and it's at least nine thirty AM, so that's almost a reasonable time. So I'll do water reuse, if the mayor does watershed.
Okay. Thank you.
We got your back, sir.
I see that, I see that. Okay, so this is going to be, Joseph? And, I don't see it here. All right.
I just have a comment on A-Bag, it says usually in April, it should be usually in June, the last few years have been in June is when they meet.
Okay, that's helpful information, we'll get that.
And I think you're the, part of the general assembly, is that correct?
Yeah, general assembly.
Yes, I'm on the exec board, appointed by the Napa County City Select.
Yeah.
So that's representing all cities. Very good. We could carpool.
Yeah, and then, you know, the, I was looking at this one thing, and I considered it before, but I'd be interested in the, in the LAFCO Commission if it's possible too. I know it's changing soon, but just to get it started, because you only get to appoint it at one time.
Okay.
I just got LAFCO, so I don't really want to give it up yet. I've only been on for a year.
Okay.
And move to an alternate in, in May?
Uh, that's correct, Councilmember Oro, the, there is a, the, the term that Vice Mayor Abadamos is currently filling expires at the end of April. The city select committee actually makes those, makes those appointments. What's a little bit unique about LAFCO is that they kind of rotate, so, starting May first, the, the city select committee will appoint some council member from the city of Napa and a council member from the city of American Canyon. At the moment, the American Canyon representative is actually the primary on LAFCO, and the city of Napa representative is the alternate on LAFCO. That will flip starting May first, and so the American Canyon representative will be an alternate, and then the city of Napa representative will be the, the primary, and that, that continues for a period of four years.
And then the alternate doesn't vote unless they're missing, unless the main person is missing, right?
The alternates attend the meetings, it's also kind of interesting, the alternates attend the meetings and can participate in the conversation, they don't actually vote on anything unless the primary is absent, and there are instances where a primary will attend a meeting and leave halfway through, and then the alternate is, ends up voting. So it's, it is interesting that the alternates do attend the meeting and, and are afforded the opportunity to provide comment, not, not public comment, but, you know, but committee member comment, but they don't actually vote unless the primary is not there. So, a lot of uniquenesses to LAFCO.
Yeah, I'd still be interested in that if, if at all possible, but I'll leave it up to council to decide.
Which capacity on that is that for?
LAFCO.
LAFCO. Yes, it's going to be as a second appointee, alternate?
You, it's the main one for twenty-three, right? These would go into effect when, Jason?
Um, starting on May first, there's not an alternate appointment, Mayor, it's a recommendation from the city council to the city select committee, and then they make the determination of the appointment to, to LAFCO, but there isn't, there isn't an alternate to that.
So you wouldn't be, if, if they appointed somebody new, you wouldn't be seated until eight, until May anyway?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
So we often talk about, especially during campaign season, how it takes a full term for someone to fully get their footing in a position. I've only been in this position for a year. I just went to my first LAFCO conference. I'm barely learning LAFCO law, I, I don't want to give it up yet. I would like my council to give me the opportunity to continue in something I just started.
I, I think that's a reasonable request from my perspective, so that's my comment on it.
Are these meetings also in-person requirement?
Uh, yes. Yeah, they are Brown Act meetings, and yeah, they're, they will be fully in person in March.
We've already started going back to in-person.
There you go. They're already in-person.
Any additional thoughts? Very prospective from council on this position. We've heard from both Councilmember Oro and Councilmember Abadamos.
We've heard from three, I weighed in by just saying, I'm partial to leaving it as-is, especially if the incumbent so wishes.
Well, since we have two choices here, I guess we should take a, a matter by a matter of vote. Does that make sense? I mean, if you're still wanting to...
Sure.
Apply for the position. Okay. Is that agreeable to council?
Actually, it's, it's feeling like a pretty awkward moment.
It is.
And I, I think I would like to have a little bit of time to talk with both of my colleagues independently to kind of find out how I would vote on this. I, I think it, we should...
You only get to talk to one. Brown Act.
Brown Act.
The darn Brown Act.
Darn Brown Act.
Oh, okay, well, I get it, I get that, I get that, but maybe, maybe I, I need to receive more information, I wasn't, you know, you know, prepared for an awkward situation like what we're having right now. I mean, if, if no one else feels that it's awkward, I mean, maybe put in the motion, and then I vote according to the motion.
If push comes to shove, we could take action on everything and address it later, but...
Exactly.
I mean, I don't, that, that just defers the awkward to another date, but at least it won't be a shock and awkward, it'll just be awkward.
Council want to defer to a later date?
I just don't understand what's happening at this point. We've traditionally allowed the incumbent to decide whether they wanted to stay on a board or not, we've never had this issue as long as I've been on the city council. I haven't done anything that I've, any of you have raised any concerns with me on. When I'm on the LAFCO board, I'm to act independently as a LAFCO board member, not as an American Canyon City Council member. No one's ever discussed any issues with me. I, I'm kind of, I'm in shock as well, this is blindsiding me, I, I don't know what's, I honestly, I don't know what to say, I feel very disrespected by my colleague. I've never done this to you before, and I've never had any, I've never seen this happen since I've been on the council.
Yeah, I was just interested in the position, that was all. And the council can make a decision, that's all. And if there's no decision, then you can keep it as-is.
I just don't think it, it rises to the level of something that needs to be deferred.
Well, I'm trying to...
We could take every now.
I'm trying to be respectful to both parties' interests, I hope you understand that, I mean, you know...
I do, I understand that, but like Councilmember Oro mentioned, it's not like anyone can talk to the both of us offline, we have to have this conversation in public, so if we defer it, we still have to have this conversation in public.
Yes, we would.
Okay. All right, well, that being the case, I'm willing to make a motion that we approve the, the appointment list as, as amended by mutual consent, which implies LAFCO stays as-is.
I'll second.
I would, and, and to add to the awkwardness, to add to the awkwardness, and maybe just my, my rookie-ness in, in my current position, I, I see we have several people that are here today, and obviously, there's a reason, and I don't think it was about, about me be, becoming vice mayor, and if we have people here that could voice their opinion, maybe, that might help me out and not violate any Brown Act, if that's appropriate.
Said differently, I think that might be a request to open public comment again to see if maybe anyone wants to make a public comment.
Exactly.
If I'm interpreting that, that would be a request through the mayor.
Right. Council want to have a public comment? Yep, I hear no objection. Public comment on this matter is open, please come forward if you have a statement regarding this activity.
Beth Marcus, I, I, you're right, this is an awkward moment. I was only, it was, I was brought to my attention that David would be interested in LAFCO, and I don't know exactly how all this works as to, Miriam is still, you know, wanting to be on it. I know that Miriam's had a, don't take this wrong, Miriam, you've, I know you've had a very busy year and everything, and as manager Holly was talking about earlier, that sometimes you can be overwhelmed with things at home, and I didn't know if you can still do all the committees that you're doing or not, and that's the only reason why I've, if David was interested in doing it, I was bringing it up that way.
Thank you. Other comment?
Fran Leamas, LAFCO is a very, very important process for the city and for the county, and I think sometimes it's good to get a different opinion. I know all of you work hard, and I'd like to see Miriam here instead of being at home, but she has a baby, and sometimes that's a conflict. So it's a very, very important position, and I know whoever gets it will do a good job.
Thank you. Other comment? Hearing nobody from the president of the audience, anybody online?
No.
Okay, well, a closed public comment, we'll come back to council, so far we have a motion, but no second.
I seconded actually, mayor.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I did and I'd like to respond to those public comments. Although I do have a baby, I have missed a single LAFCO meeting. I am an attorney. I believe I'm totally capable of managing my time. If I couldn't do it, I would say that I couldn't do it, but thank you for your concern. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mayor, real quickly, I want to summarize the changes and make sure that the city clerk and I have captured the changes because there were a number of them. The mayor will be the appointment, the second appointment to the Climate Action Committee. Councilmember Joseph will be the alternate to RCD. Councilmember Oro will be the appointee to the WIC. Mayor Garcia will be the appointee to North Bay Water Shed Association. Councilmember Joseph will be the appointee to a North Bay Water Reuse Authority and those are the only changes that we have noting that I beg usually meets in June. That's what I understand the motion.
And so to clarify, the voting for the motion would make those changes only, leaving LAFCO as is?
Correct. I haven't, those are the changes that I've seen. If there are other changes, certainly the council, if the council wants to consider this LAFCO item separately or however you want to do it, you can. I just wanted to capture the things I was certain about, which were the notes I was taking.
Then for me then, because of the awkwardness, I would like to at least continue that part, the LAFCO piece. If I can't talk to them individually, I like to talk to people in the community that have a strong feeling about it and I can do that and not violate the Brown Act.
Okay. In that case, I'd suggest asking council, yeah, I'd suggest, councilmember Washington, if you want to ask councilmember Joseph whether he'd be willing to amend his emotion to pull out the LAFCO item for a date still to be determined, being that we have, already have a motion and a second.
Going to need to make a substitute for amended.
What Jason just said, Mark.
I, just to make sure it's awkward, I'm going to say no. I think if you want to continue it, then you would end up voting no on this particular motion.
Okay.
And then we'll consider plan B.
Okay. The request for amended motion was a no, so would be absent any further comment from council. Roll call vote would be.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear that is vice mayor Abadamos is the second?
Correct.
Thank you.
It was a motion by Joseph and a second by Abadamos.
Got it.
That would retain, councilmember Abadamos as first appointee to LAFCO. Correct?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
No, because I could, I'd like to see them separated.
Councilmember Washington?
No.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
I vote yes and I would like to make a comment that this awkwardness is clearly related to measure J. I was not in favor of measure J and now the proponents are trying to have me taken out of LAFCO and put in someone who is an advocate for measure J. I just want that on the record. That's the awkwardness publicly.
Mayor Garcia?
With respect to councilmember Washington's need for more information, I will vote no.
Thank you.
Now, what does that do with all the other appointments?
So the motion does not pass. What I heard was an interest in moving the items unrelated to LAFCO that we previously discussed and continuing the LAFCO item to a subsequent meeting and so I'd suggest if a councilmember wants to make that motion, there might be a second for that.
Well, I will make that motion. Okay? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Abadamos?
No.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, mayor and council, thank you. That motion passes. As it relates to the carve-out on the LAFCO appointment, we can probably take that up under future agenda items here in a few moments and talk about when the council would like to have that item be brought back, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah, we'll take that up with future agenda items. Okay, so just to restate, with respect to all matters that are not related to LAFCO, then the requested changes are approved.
Correct. We made a number of notes, mayor, and captured those in the minutes. So this appointments list will be modified, the respective agencies will be notified of the changes and.
With respect to the LAFCO representative, councilmember Abadamos remains in that office. We will discuss that at another time.
Correct. The council's taken no action on that at this moment and so in a few, in upcoming here in the agenda, we'll talk about when to bring that back as a future agenda item.
Very good. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
That concludes the business item nine, B9. We're now on to management staff oral reports.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. We actually don't have any management reports from staff tonight, but I do have an announcement that I'm excited about. We do have a new finance director. His name is Juan Gomez. He's actually an American Canyon resident and actually a Citizens Academy graduate and we're very excited to have him join our team. We had a press release earlier this week. His first day will be January ninth and then the council will be smearing him in at council at our first meeting in January, January seventeenth. So very excited to bring Juan onto our team.
He's also my neighbor, so.
That had nothing to do with it, but he happens to be one of David's neighbors.
So that, that means our percentage goes from forty-four to like forty-five percent. Very good.
Yeah, his was not part of the demographics. That was a few weeks back, so very excited to welcome him and great way to end the year from a staffing perspective. That's all we have, mayor. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to council, mayor, council comments, committee reports, and then we'll take up future agenda items.
We did have a particular item here. Vice Mayor Abadamos attended the Cal Cities League Leaders Conference and I wanted to share her experience there and talk a little bit about the League Leaders Conference.
Very good.
Okay, so I went to Monterey for three days to the Cal Cities League Leaders Workshop. I, as you all know, I am the vice president of the North Bay Division. I do work very hard as a council member, even though I have a child. We spent the entire time working on the policy issues for the future, for 2023, what we want Cal Cities to focus on. We have two issues pertaining to homelessness and housing. So one of them is the availability and affordability of housing. So Cal Cities is going to advocate for bills that promote availability and affordability of housing. The other one is to protect and expand investments to prevent homelessness and provide wraparound services. So what we want to do is secure sustainable state funding that bolsters cities' long-term planning efforts to support individuals experiencing homelessness and expand access to mental health, substance use treatment, and wraparound services in general. At this conference, it was very interesting. Most of the people there were very concerned about city control, local control, and making sure that we don't lose any of that this year to the state. And so another one of the policy issues was to safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. And we actually initially were supposed to only pick three policy issues and after an entire day of going back and forth and advocating for different positions, the policy team came back and told us that they're going to work on four and that was, the one that was added was the housing availability and affordability because there was so much advocacy for it and we had a huge discussion about if homelessness and wraparound services and housing availability and affordability are one issue or three separate issues, then we ended up splitting them up into two separate issues. So the homelessness and wraparound services and then the housing availability and affordability. And then the last policy issue, it was very interesting because nobody verbally spoke about this, but when we, when it was time to vote on the issues, it got probably the most votes out of any other policy issue that we discussed and it was to improve public safety in California communities. So we want to explore strategies to address crime and its underlying causes and those are the four policy issues that we came up with. So hopefully you guys are all satisfied with that, but that's the plan moving forward for 2023.
Very good. Sounds like a very active meeting there.
It was amazing. It was a really different experience than just going to, you know, the annual conference and it felt very productive and there, of course, there were also networking opportunities at the conference, but it was pretty amazing.
Any particular take-home value from that? I mean, how are other people solving it out? I just always appreciate the networking opportunity.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to talk to anybody about how we were, how they're solving those issues. We've been to several different seminars and panels on these various subjects. I'm sure you have too, you have too, mayor. I actually did a lot of talking to people about different ways of doing city manager and city attorney evaluations when I was at that one, so you know where my mind was.
Yes, we understand.
Yeah.
Anything further?
And then, you guys know, shortly after, like three days after that, I ended up going to Morocco for my State Department work. Well, it's because I'm a council member, I'm part of this cohort, as you know, funded by the State Department, where we go to various Middle Eastern countries and mentor elected officials in local government. So this time it was Morocco and it was a really interesting experience. When, last time it was Tunisia and Tunisia had never had a local government before, so it was all about how do you decentralize from only having like a central government to now having all of this, this local stuff? And then Morocco was different in that they have so many protections in their constitution that we don't even have. It was really amazing. It seemed like they were very progressive in some areas, like beyond the United States even. However, they have no implementation. So although they have all of these safeguards and protections in their constitutions, they don't have any, anything in place to help them actually utilize their constitution to its full potential, if that makes sense. So that cohort is, the Moroccan peers are coming to the United States in February, at the end of February, and will be meeting in Washington DC to show them like our federal government and then the local government that we're going to is Yonkers, New York, because the president of the council of Yonkers, New York is one of the members of this cohort. So we're going to go into his municipality and teach them, or show them our local government structure.
Wow.
It's been a very busy month.
That had to be very educational, just to see how other folks are trying to solve issues locally, regardless of where you live on the planet, you know, where people congregate and there's things about cooperative work and how do we take care of each other, get business.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then in July, we're supposed to go to our third country. So this program is actually supposed to be wrapping up by the end of 2023, but COVID kind of put a damper on things. We were supposed to go to Morocco in 2019, if you guys remember, and it never happened. So now we have like two countries in one year, so I'm working with two sets of peers at the same time. And so we're bringing the Jordanians and the Moroccans at the same time to the United States and we're going to Jordan in February.
Wow, fantastic. Of course, I guess there was a big celebration in Morocco over the World Cup.
Oh, it was so cool to be there during that.
Yeah, we all enjoyed it on TV. You got to see it in person, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was so cool.
That, the councilmember Joseph, anything for the add here? No. Glad I was able to get it in on time this time around. All right. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, councilmember Oro, anything?
Yeah, I actually do. We held the last meeting of the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation Board meeting on, yeah, it was this week, it was on Monday actually, and it was at the Four Seasons Resorts and Residences in Napa Valley in Cal Stoga. Pretty fancy place. Really enjoyed having a meeting there. It's about the only time I'll be there. We went over the budgets, pretty perfunctory stuff, but one of the things that came up was, one, was room rates continue to be double of all the surrounding comparative areas. I think it was like five sixty here in Napa County. Monterey, which we compare ourselves to, are like two seventy. Sonoma is like two fifty and San Francisco was like two twenty. So in terms of average tourist dollars for room rates, Napa continues to get the highest amount. There's only fifty-seven hundred rooms available in Napa. All those other places have more rooms and there's a little bit of talk of everybody enjoying it, but it's not sustainable. When you're looking at, you know, seventeen hundred dollar, two thousand dollar rooms a night at the Four Seasons, but if you're doing the Best Western in Napa, those are even at four to five hundred dollars. And when people start paying that amount of money, they expect certain kind of services that aren't necessarily associated with the Best Western, which is causing a little angst for staff and guests. Guests expect more, staff says, no, this is the Best Western, not the Four Seasons. So there's issues around that and, you know, hiring continues to be a little bit of a problem, but the one thing that popped on my radar, and usually I take a little bit of notes here and there, but in 2025, the Napa Valley, let me just make sure I get the name right here, had to pull it up. The Napa Valley Management, Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District Management District Plan is set to expire. Mark, I don't know if you were involved with this in the past, but we did the first one in 2010 for five years and this one lasted for ten years. Sometime in 2023, they're going to be rolling it out to jurisdictions. Jurisdictions itself need to make sure that they are part of the management district plan. I think in American Canyon, I think our hotelers will support it in terms of what is going forward, but new issues will come up that weren't available or weren't really prominent ten years, or five years ago, seven years ago in 2015. So there's probably a little bit of resentment from some folks of funding this, so there might be some angst from citizens, particularly up Valley. I know Mayor Canny had brought up, you know, concerns from his residents about being a tourist town. He kindly reminded everybody in the room that Cal Stoga was founded as a tourist town.
It was.
So.
Hot Springs, yes.
Yeah, it was the hot springs. That was the only reason why you would go there. But the other thing that might come into play is the notion of short-term rentals. People up Valley are probably missing out on tax income for that. I know we don't allow it here in American Canyon, we don't have a policy for that, but you know, do we include that in the management district plan?
I think it's like Morocco. We don't allow it, that doesn't necessarily mean it's not happening.
Yeah, exactly. So anyways, I'm flagging that because I think that's going to come up in the year and Jason, you might start to hear about it to come through and they're going to slowly roll it out. There's going to be some communication that needs to happen about it, but in terms of tackling something big, this will be a big one.
No, I appreciate that heads up and probably some work to do. With any luck, by 2025, we'll actually have two, potentially three, new hoteliers in the wings and so our dynamic will be quite a bit different even in that time period, so.
Yeah, the whole process is like a general plan, so it's going to take eighteen, two years to eighteen months to get it done with public input and everything like that and interviews and they'll have the outside consultants do the whole thing.
I was going to say seventeen, or seven years ago, when they re-upped it for ten years, it went much smoother. I mean, basically, it was working well, they were, you know, revenues were going up and this was just making it more permanent. This time around, the manager's right that the dynamics will be dramatically different, whereas with three hotels, all three general managers were automatically on our local group. When you add another one, Buzz Butler drops off and is guaranteed.
There's potentially three new hotels.
Right. So with more than one new hotel, with two or three hotels, the hotels are going to have to figure out who's going to represent all of you and somebody's going to be the odd man out or two maybe odd out.
Did they actually talk about a vote that was going to be needed between, of the hoteliers? I mean, this was a, the TOT that is collected that goes to tourism district is.
Yeah, a vote by the local hotelers will be part of that.
Yeah, so they're, right, they're, and my, my understanding is that whether we have three or five or six, they're part of that entire countywide pool, so it's not as if those five or six are going to vote, it's, they're part of the, sort of this countywide district.
Yeah, but I don't have the details, but local, it's locally, it's done locally. Yeah, but I don't have the details, but local, it's locally. It's done locally, and it kind of rolls up. So there may be properties like in Calistoga that don't participate.
Yeah, so there's going to be some dynamic, for sure. Thank you for that.
Spirited discussions to follow, I'm sure.
Yes.
It's one of our biggest job producers here, you know, so.
Yeah. Just to segue on that really quickly, the February NIC log, currently scheduled for February 16th, is going to involve a presentation from a professor over at Sonoma State by the name of Robert Eichler. I think I'm pronouncing his name correctly. He's going to be presenting sort of a fiscal outlook for Napa County as a whole, including the cities, like ourselves, property tax, sales tax, and TOT projections. To get to Councilmember Oro's point, not necessarily with our hoteliers, but I'm aware of conversations elsewhere in the valley where, yeah, there is a lot of concern about the stability and the sustainability of those, those rates when they're 2X compared to what we think are our competitors. So it's, they're loving the additional TOT revenue, and they're also recognizing it's probably not sustainable. What happens when those, when those rates come crashing back to earth for them fiscally, and when might that happen? So still, going to be a very engaging conversation for us because our outlook, sales to, sales tax, or property tax, will all be a part of that same conversation.
If I may add, there was also a part of the marketing presentation, and there's a narrative that Napa County is very expensive. I don't need to be told that story because if you go out to eat, you're like, wow, it's expensive. They're doing an ad campaign to try to change that narrative. There was a Wall Street Journal article. There was a Chronicle article, all about Napa roommates being high. You will see a campaign coming out soon called Affordable Luxury, targeting local folks and people that can spend a little bit more on luxury. And so they'll be highlighting a few things. And so trying to change that narrative.
We're looking forward to see that.
Well, then our open space amenities will really, you know, be great. Because you can have a great day out at Wetlands or up in Newell, free as, free as you want.
And it's luxurious.
Yeah, you know, forage for food.
Room for a food truck, too.
You should put a donation box out there. Make it totally free.
You should.
Anything for the report, Councilmember Oro?
No, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Washington, anything to report?
Well, one, I'd like to thank my colleagues for taking off some of the commitments that I have from the committees off my plate. I appreciate it. I appreciate your understanding of my workload, but nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Bear in mind, you've picked up a lot of workload.
Oh, no, I realize that.
So it'll all work out. It'll all work out.
I think probably the big thing of the report, it just was very honored to be, had a special recognition, honor, from the Napa Unified School District, as a campaign, my campaign contributions for Measure A2. It did not pass in Napa, A1, but only got 54.62. It was just a few hundred votes or less short of being able to pass it. We passed it almost at a two to one. And proud to be part of that for them. As we know, why do people come to American Canyon? It's a safe city. Thank you, Chief Greenberg and all your officers. And it's got great schools. And why does it have great schools? Because we support schools for our kids. That's why they come here. On the other side of that also is real estate value here is much higher than some neighboring communities because of the fact we have those two qualities that families want. And given that, business wants to be here as well. So I was speaking about economic projections, I think it ought to look very favorable for American Canyon. That would conclude my report. I'll just keep it brief, that brief this evening. We have a future agenda item to take up, and that would be the issue of scheduling, as I'm understanding it, the matter of the LAFCO representative for American Canyon. Our next meeting will be January 17.
That's correct, Mayor. Listed there in the agenda are future agenda items of note. We endeavor to identify the business items that might be coming forward or presentations or those sorts of things. There's, of course, a consent calendar that's not identified on here. But, you know, in, in looking at this, January 17th looks like it could accommodate this conversation. And actually, any of these other meetings could probably accommodate it as well. It's not an extensive staff report. It's going to be a fairly short staff report. So if, if January 17th felt like there was enough time to have dialogues with members of the community and then bring it back to council for conversation, we can put it on the agenda for the 17th, or if there's a different date, we'll follow whatever the council.
That work for you, Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes, sir.
Anything like that? Okay, fine. Then let's put that matter on for January 17th, so we can bring closure to these appointments. Very good. Anything further to add on future agenda items, Mr. Holly?
No, Mayor.
All right. Well, I'd like to, in adjournment, I'd like to remember Mayor Harry Price of Fairfield. He just passed away recently. And Mayor Price had been involved in city council and community, seems like forever, in Fairfield. He was an educator as well. I think he first, they had a nice article regarding him in the Times Herald here that last week. And I think he has served on the city council from 1995, and following that, a number of years as mayor. So, and a man who was always pretty much honored his community. He was a humble man, I would say, in many respects, but very honorable. And I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Harry Price. If you will take a moment, please. Thank you. We have concluded our business for the evening. We are adjourned. We're going to adjourn to a, a community-type event. This is not a city council thing. It's called the Mayor's Santa Hats and Christmas Carol. We're adjourned.
I can do it.
All right. I got mine. Councilmember Abadamos, do you have your?
Can we just do one song?
Just one. We can do the first one. It's really easy.
You want to have? It's your option entirely. Nobody's coerced in doing this. You just have to do it. All right. We're going to start with jingle bells.
Oh, we're doing, just doing jingle bells?
Yep, we're doing jingle bells.
That's it.
Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer.
We have the prerogative to say, okay, I'm doing jingle bells.
I'm going for it. Let's go.
Okay.
Ready?
Dash into the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, or the fields we go laughing all the way. Making spirits bright. What fun it is to laugh and sing a slaying song tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh.
Yay! Bravo, 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 bravo. All right. All right, now I got you warmed up. You know Dasher, ain't that?
Dasher. Prancer, Comet, and Cupid, and Donner and Blitzen. But you recall the most famous reindeer of all. Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer had a shiny nose. And if you ever saw him.
You see it, Rick? You see it on the street?
He would say it glows. All of the other reindeers used to laugh and call him names. Never let poor Rudolph join any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph the red-nosed so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then how the reindeer loved him, had to shout out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, he'll go down in history. Yay!
I had a Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
With that, I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.